We'll call tonight's meeting. Boys and the parents at work. Manny, roll call please.
Tony Gengler?
Yes.
Bob Richard?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Yes.
Rick Brown?
Here.
Matt Oddie?
Yes.
Lloyd Latrell?
Present.
Robert Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. If you stand with me for the invitation and the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening. As always, give us the wisdom to make the proper decisions for our citizens. Please be with our great country as we go through some rough times with racial relations in our country. And we all know that a lot of things against law enforcement right now. And be with those of you in the land as they serve us and protect us and our fair country. Be with our law enforcement in your name, our law enforcement and our enforcement in the name of God.
Amen. Let's raise the flag of the United States of America and be the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob, you have a question?
I don't have anything right now.
Tony?
Yeah, I was asked a question here. Somebody from outside the city amendments is wanting to put up a sheet. Are they required to come in and get a permit here at the present time?
No. They only permit or something?
Well, yes, or whatever. I mean, they're within the two mile zone here and they're listening.
No.
Asking a question. As far as I know right now, they don't.
No.
They don't have to do anything as far as the city is concerned.
No.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bob, you have anything?
Oh, I want to thank Ronnie's crew. They fixed my dinner Sunday. I had fried squirrel. But I called Ronnie. I was moving down and they were there in about ten minutes. They've been on it. It was caused by my squirrel.
And yours?
Yeah, probably built it.
I think he should.
If I can get away with it, I will.
But I'm glad you're back home. Good time and I really appreciate it for Sunday morning.
Okay, that's what you're treating.
What did it taste like? What did it taste like?
Chicken. It tastes like chicken.
Rick, come this time?
Thank you. Ken?
A couple of things. First thing, are we on schedule on the Highway 14 project as far as sewer, cutting down trees?
Yeah. Um, bid lighting will be in actual work. We shouldn't be on that schedule still. I haven't heard any different lately. And so construction will start in spring, but we've started our work as far as.
Well, I noticed we've got a backhoe and stuff there.
Right. Yeah, that's us.
Yeah, I knew that was us, but we're not scheduled as far as.
Yeah, we had a meeting with them departments here last month. And everybody kind of scheduled how they're going to do it. It's going to be a tight schedule if the contractor comes in, which we think they will. But we're going to, we have everything coordinated between water, sewer, and electric to get our things done and coordinate who's going to go first and whatever. So we're not each other's.
And the second thing I had, Tony kind of alluded into this. Where are we at on the comprehensive plan? What's our next step?
Anaquila comes back with updated land use maps and all that for their next planning commission meeting, which will be next Tuesday. Coming in here.
That's all I've got.
I'm just looking forward to the most important high school football game of the season this Friday. We're going to be concordant. Here. Your favorite's here.
Oh, I could have run. We'll put in the book. It's got an interesting note about the specific. For what it's worth. Like they age my bets.
Lloyd, I have one thing. If you would pass on the thank you for me for the work the transportation department's doing with Chippewa Sealing. Looks like they've covered a lot of ground.
Yeah.
Nice one, Ed. I think the North Campus looks really nice. Those are the nice streets up there. It's like the weeds are getting under control. I hear there's going to be a few more houses broken down here in a week or two. So kind of nice to see things.
Did somebody get ahold of you Heather this week about lots up there?
Lots of people got ahold of me this week. Might ask me later if you want to.
Katie?
What do you think of this?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rodden? I do have a few things. Water projects, certainly have not forgotten about that. Jim and I are going to be meeting with engineer, engineers I guess on this actually, Swakopmund. And we're going to meet September sixteenth and with John Brummer. He's been, last time he gave it for four options. We're going to kind of try to get some direction from the engineers on which one of those options would be most appropriate to solve whatever problem we've got. Along with that USDA is holding a workshop for your funding, which is general sixteen, which is great. We're giving that over at the more central planning. So maybe we have programs that do fund water, sewer, types of things like that. I'm not that familiar with USDA. I've worked with the KICU, they're about loan fund and what Department of Commerce, block grants and things like that. I don't have a whole lot of experience with USDA. So that'd be an experience for me. If we go that route, it's one of the many different routes available to work funding projects.
Do we have anybody looking into training on water treatment for our new water director? I'm just seeing from the last year, we've had these letters come out and these letters weren't coming out previously. I'm hoping that we have some training opportunities that we can investigate and see if there's something like this. And, you know, it may not be so.
No, it's, yes, it's, what I know about this is that part of the, part of the plan itself is, is part of what you're experienced with a letter for over that limit. And part of it's just the way we're treating not to get that case in order that's had side effect of we're doing something, we're, you know, causing something else. So there isn't a real great answer to that right now with the facilities you have.
So there is the training.
Not, not really for that. I mean, they, they know what pretty much causes, you know, the thing to go, whatever that is. And I, I can take it. Not talking enough. You know, you're trying to counteract one thing by doing this. Probably what we have right now, you probably cannot, you know, consistently. Anyway, so yeah, I don't really think that's a training problem. But also we already mentioned comprehensive plan coming at us. Uh, we talked about, I think last time during the work session, we talked a little bit about getting tablets for, for anybody. And we have one, one council member answers that. Is there anybody else who is, before we take that step? I don't know if there were twenty, three, seven people or whatever. Yeah, an interest in that.
Whatever saves time.
Yeah, it really would. So, and of course, completely optional to one unless part of your notice. So we got here, uh, we're in the Ellen's addition. We've been over there recently. The plan is to wrap up that project here this week. They did about a hundred thousand feet here recently on that. And so they got some finishing work to go and we're not above that street. After that then, we're going to be going up to North Campus, L C parking lot, the long promised L C parking lot. They've been up there, already started some one call dirt work and preliminary work actually on that. So once it's done, weather's holding up a little bit for us, we'll get up and start that project here. And, you know, it'll take a little while to finish that, but it's not a huge project. We should finish that pretty good time and weather. Uh, the other thing is power plants. We've been talking about that pipeline, the gas pipeline to the, directly to our power plants because of the pressure situation out there and all that. Met with K Gas down at Selina last Friday, talked about that because we have various different options from that. There's various different numbers over the past year. Uh, they sharpened their pencils. They actually, contractors actually kind of did this is what I understood. They came back with a price now of one point one million dollars.
One?
Point one. I don't, I don't know. I mean, they, they said that the original estimate was an estimate.
They sharpened their pencils so they could write that small to get all the.
To get, oh yeah, basically. Yeah, so we're a little surprised at that. I can't recommend a pipeline for one point one million because committee unknowns. There, how much we use the plant, how much gas we're going to use versus diesel. But we always run the diesel. We'll plant around the diesel if we can and then we're going to do a fuel plan for a reason. One point one million dollars this time. Half a million would have been a stretch. One point one, I just can't recommend to do that. So what's our other option going forward? We did have another company look at that for Black Hills Energy. In November, the price in January was around eight hundred thousand for the same thing. So we've gone back and approached them. I haven't gotten the answer yet as of today. Their price may have changed since January. I don't know if they go up, down, or sideways. The advantage of that is we would own it. It would be our, be our pipeline. Diesel's could use it unless we said they could, you know, wait. The bad part is we would own it, so we'd have to maintain it. Which they, they would do for us if we bought something else. It's around, probably around two thousand, maybe two point five. But that would be the, the other alternative.
My question is, and I was with Connie about this, but when we sell electricity, we charge accordingly to what fuel we burn. But when we run diesel, we charge.
If you're selling to the power pool, they guarantee a profit.
So my question would be what percentage of the diesel do we use for ourselves versus for ourselves?
Not much. We have been called upon to run diesel in the past couple of years, but it's rare.
So then why would we even think about?
But, you know, that's a good question. You stand pat and you can know. So if you run it on diesel, most likely they're not going to call you. Like I said, a couple of emergencies that went this year, I think it was two years ago, they did call. And they pay a, they pay a premium for doing that, but everybody's desperate for power on that basis and call us and we ran on diesel.
And it's what, like double or something?
Uh, depends on the market, yeah. I mean, yeah, natural gas right now is really cheap. Diesel is falling, but it's still more expensive. It's really, yeah, it's really come down.
Well, that was my question.
They'll stay down the next ten years. I have no idea.
Ninety percent of it we're selling it back to two thousand C E.
Well, the only, the only problem would be is if we had, or our route, our type we got cut peak time July and August, we had about three, four, you know, just for us. Are you going to want to run diesel for a week or, you know, something like that? Probably not. Probably not if you want to run natural gas. Because it's just, it's not that great.
People are not going to spend very well.
No, I can't, I can't recommend that we go along with that. I, I think, you know, they just don't really monitor the pipeline because there's not another big customer coming on. I guess they just don't see the, the reason to.
The other thing regardless of how our water tests come out, do we need to be looking hard at what we're going to do with that water plant, upgrading it or?
Yeah, that's what, that's where, you know, it's either replace that completely upgraded, new one at the lake or here or our, we're going to do. I mean, the four options.
That's what you're going to be.
Yeah, we're going to be about that, yeah. I see you need to go. New presentation, we just kind of left it there. I said, here's your four options. What do you got to say? And we, and we had some good feedback on what, you know, but we had options for one million, eleven million. So.
Well, I think that's where we need to be putting our money right now.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, either pipeline can wait or we can go a different road and fix more other options. But yeah, going to one point one that K Gas and saying, yeah. Good news is if they said, you know, we said in September, hey, let's go ahead and do it. They said they could get it in by the end of the year if you wanted to do that. Because they have a contractor they work with who can come in and do it. But we're not going to be really hurried to have it by January either. I mean, that's been a high time of year for us. And I don't wish it would so long get back, but here's a one point one million dollar offer. Pretty extreme today. So anyway, that's, that's the bad news as far as that.
Well, you got the bottom of that.
Yeah, finally, um, like I said, I'm not sure, you know, and we tried different ways of approaching this. Actually would build it for a little cheaper, like eight hundred and fifty thousand, but we have to guarantee we've been buying X amount of gas for. So then we just made it up a different way. I mean, it'll, it'll still work out if we have one point one million dollars. But it's just that, you know, you're still going to get there. So that's not a good option. So anyway, um, kind of good news back.
What do we have with the railroad?
You know, where they don't really respond to anything. What they're asking, uh, I saw his court enforcement, see they have grass, pollard grass issues. They don't really ever respond to it sometimes. They really can't put it on their taxes. And as far as repairing, like they moved some materials around, but they haven't moved their equipment in. Their area manager that used to be here was pretty good responding. At least he's moved out, taxes or something. I don't get any response from the folks in town. So I don't, I don't know. It looks like they're ready to move at any time, but then, you know, they don't. So, and I don't see them either east or west of this building either. So I don't know where that's all. They had promised we'd do it by spring. We're here by September first.
Really getting paid. Spring's about over.
Yeah, yeah, it's a long spring. You know, got a lot of rain, but yeah, that's.
They didn't tell you what spring.
They said, well, they asked me, they did.
They said it would be this spring, you know.
Well, they do have a federal grant. That's where the money's coming from.
Yeah, they go to some of our federal people.
Yeah, see, you wouldn't start to say, oh.
You say they got federal money?
That's what that is.
They got it, get over there and ran.
Yeah, you and I haven't need to go through. Yeah, it's actually paid for through the federal grant comes to KOD and then it's dispersed. That's federal railroad money. You know, it's like ninety percent. So the monies are waiting to be spent. If they were allocated last year, they're supposed to get it done this year. So the clock's ticking on it. That's, I mean, that's, that's actually what it is. And it's very difficult.
Why don't you stick with the Marin can open?
Yeah. But you got to, you got to break it off some. So, um, one last thing. We've been talking about vehicles. Trucks and other such things. We'll have another one here coming up. But this, um, has an offer from a goss from a local dealer here. Mainly the need attendant parks and wrecking codes enforcement. And our little, our little auto dealer approached me last week. We actually, the week before with this and said, um, I've got three possibilities for you. Two I'm not really interested in. But the two thousand fifteen, which is a new vehicle still, the F one fifty for that twenty-two four. I am interested in it, especially for code enforcement. Chris is now driving a twenty-year-old truck that has a transmission that's slipping badly every day on that. And we could actually do a lease purchase option on that truck that wanted to, I mean, that's ran. We looked at mine used and they said we're around fifteen, we could use one, but for five or seven thousand, we're in that area and we get a new one, so.
What about?
No, I mean, he just came walking in the door.
I don't know if it's fair if we don't pick up either.
Well, yeah, we've kind of done it before this way, but yeah, we can actually put out feedbacks because it's a new. I don't really feel good about having a used vehicle, but a new one. You could, yeah. I was thinking of rotating that and then for any parks and that. You would love to see that. If you could get that, yeah, you would, yeah.
Now you got some bargaining stuff.
Well, the other thing about this, it's available. It's not locked. I don't think it's here, but he has access to all three of these right now and could get here within a week, so.
Understand, but I don't think it's fair to the business.
Yeah, that's fine. He just walked in the door and.
That's my first opinion of the council doing. These are good prices.
Yeah, we got other dealers there and they'll work with them.
Yeah, we can do that too.
He said fifteen thousand or twenty-five hundred?
Uh, that didn't really give you a price on. Usually that's, yeah, somewhere in that area. It's, you know, around fifteen or so. Because we have been talking about buying some used and I see you're too old and they said, well, it says, hold on, I think I can get somewhere around twenty for a brand new one.
Is it tail damaged?
Yeah. Thing is, they're just a basic truck or two-wheel drive, a regular cab. It's not four-wheel or anything. So it's, it's just a truck and that's basically all.
What is it, a ton truck or a two-ton, three-ton?
You have one fifty? Yeah, that's just a basic half-ton truck or something. Nothing to say at all on that, so.
Flatbed or?
No.
No, no, we need a flatbed. Just your regular. Yeah, that wouldn't be, yeah, I don't think so. But anyway, that kind of gives you a sense of what.
So I, I agree. I mean. Yeah, I wouldn't give them that price for that.
Right, yeah, I would say, I wonder what somebody with this advantage would do. Uh, yeah, that might be where I approach to see if they can, we need to keep the prospect of similar vehicles. And that's the, well, so like a two-wheel drive truck is one. So they have a chance. Anyway, so my, anyway, all right. And as you may have known, when you have a revised agenda, that's because of the fire truck that we'll talk about. We didn't have that information on Friday. All right.
Well, thank you Glenn. Next item on that one is a consent agenda. And we had a special meeting here last week and Lloyd wasn't able to attend. And it went so quick. And so I'd like a motion to approve the August eighteenth council meeting in appropriations nine A. And then we'll come back and then Lloyd can vote on the ones that he was here. Been moved by councilman now, we accept the consent agenda. The August eighteenth council meeting appropriations nine A. Motion's made by Councilman Latrell, second by, excuse me, motion's made by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote please?
Brown?
Yep.
Gengler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I now entertain a motion to accept the minimum minutes of the August twenty-fifth special. Been moved by Councilman Oddie that we approved the August twenty-fifth council, special council meeting minutes by the second. Second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, please take another roll call vote please.
Brown?
Yep.
Gengler?
I wasn't here, but go ahead, I'm here.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell? Richard?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda under resolutions is resolution twenty fifteen nineteen, unfit structure located at four twenty-one East South Street. Chris, you want to elaborate?
Yeah, this is again, just to set a time and date for the public hearing where it would be considered, uh, council then can consider what to do with that. All this does is just set a time and date for public hearing.
Yes. Is that the house that's on the corner or the house with all the trees?
Just one with all the trees right there.
I saw. It's been moved by Councilman Oddie that we approve resolution twenty fifteen nineteen, unfit structure located at four twenty-one East South Street. You have a second? Second by Councilman Miller. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion? Manny, would you take a roll call vote please?
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening under resolutions is resolution twenty fifteen twenty, unfit structure located at five eleven East South Street. Owned by Wayne and Julia Hicks.
This likewise is just to set the time and date for the public hearing.
So been moved by Councilman Latrell that will be approve resolution twenty fifteen twenty, unfit structure, five eleven East South Street. Second by Councilman Peterson. Any discussion? No discussion? Manny, would you take a roll call please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chris, I noticed the other day our friend up north is parking his yard.
When I catch it, then I take pictures of it.
He's been pretty good, but I went by there and he had it beside the sidewalk. I was in the driveway and going with his yard.
Yeah, I, I think it's his way to get the thumb in her eye a little bit, but as I, as I collect the evidence, then we, we have to bring it up again.
Coming down here at night, he had two cars parked in that drive right there off the street.
Yeah.
And the front end's over the sidewalk. So.
Front end or back end? Usually has the back end.
In other words, when I'm on a wheelchair, I have to go around it.
Yeah. I'll, I'll give a chief, that's a law enforcement issue.
Well, every Sunday, drive by a place at one thirty and drive by it at six o'clock at night in the neighborhood south. We've got his pickup sitting there. I'm giving you the timeframe when I've seen it there. Every Sunday for the past three months.
I was there this weekend, the one next door.
Okay. He, he lives on the corner, his wife lives.
No, no, the next corner, the next house south.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
It's a Dodge pickup.
Yeah, I know who that is.
Lord Hill was there. I wasn't going to use his name, but now.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll probably have to leave a note with him or something just to.
Thank you, Chris. Next item on the resolutions agenda is resolution twenty fifteen twenty-one, fire truck financing.
Yeah, typically we do the financing, we do by a resolution, so that's why it comes first now here. This is what we talked about at the last meeting that bid came in, we're at that three, three hundred fifty thousand. So anyway, I'm with you. Seven-year lease purchase, that's, that's, it's under three percent, the two points. You go to page four, that's kind of the harder matter there. You see where seven years it goes out. We would put forty thousand down, so it's two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand we would finance. And that middle row there, we see a lease payment of forty-two thousand. Page four, she got two there. That'd be the yearly lease payment for a fire truck. How much?
How much, Andrew?
See right here, this is the payment. So you have, you have to, the rental there in the industry.
At the second page four. Was there a five-year option or the scat?
There was, but that would be a higher per payment per year than over fifty thousand. So seven years spreads that out. So I mean, we dedicated right now one mil to the fire truck. So we either come back or our assessment, our immediate assessment way if it grows over seven years, it's pretty consistent. Might not have to be a recon cession.
So where's the other, almost half of the bank account?
So, where's the other, almost half of the payment jump right here?
Well, that's what we.
Because one mill is only twenty.
About twenty-four thousand right now, so, yeah, so it's gonna be another three quarters of a year or whatever going forward. So, yeah, we can make, you know, first payment on that, but the next year, we'll have to make the decision, either pay for something else. If there is that seven mill's up, two budgets ago, or we have to go up, whatever it would take to beat the forty-two. So, you understand, Pat, it's kind of sweet. Well, the mill let me go to a little bit, but we have another year to decide. How are you actually gonna do that?
Evaluation goes up for whoever.
It does. I don't want to go up that much, I mean, you know. Yeah, it would, you would all, yeah, I mean, typically, you know, our val, our assessment's been going up, so we've been getting to one, you know, thirty thousand dollars a year.